Welcome, everybody, to the June 4th, 2025 Nassau County Government Dialogue Board Meeting. I'm pleased to announce that the Nassau County Legislature has appointed two members, Tyler Mead and David Gallo. Unfortunately, neither of them could make it tonight, so you can meet them at our next meeting. Let's begin with introducing the boards, according to my list.
Martin Milconian, Public Member.
Barry Stein, Landlord Member.
Rob Roweski, Tenant Member.
Janetta Alexander, Public Member.
Catherine Harris-Marcasi, Tenants Member.
And I'm Garrett Gray, and I'm a Public Member.
And I'm James Ferraro, of the Department of Housing and Community Rental.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Janetta? Okay, so, everybody should know how this works. I will call the names of the people in the order in which they signed in. When you come up, please introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes to address the board. We will start with Ms. Lynn Anderson. Lynn, just spell your last name, please. Okay.
Do you have your first amendment for the board? My name is Lynn Anderson.
Speak into the mic!
My name is Lynn Anderson, and I have lived in the rent-stabilized apartment in Long Beach for forty-eight years. I raised my son there, and I am, as a single mother. He is now a grown-up with his own family. I am sixty-six years old, and have worked as a secretary for over forty-five years. Despite a lifetime of work, I am still employed, full-time, because I cannot afford to retire. I currently hold a two-year lease, which, in theory, should provide me with housing stability, but with rent adjustments behind, that security turns into fear. Every increase chips away my ability to retain my home, the same home I've kept for nearly five decades. As I get older, I worry. My savings are limited to my four-month K. I do not own property, and I have no additional income. If I was too uptight today, my social security benefits would barely cover my rent, which continues to climb. According to National Data, the average monthly social security benefit is around thirteen hundred dollars. That amount is simply not enough to live on, not when rents, utilities, and healthcare were over rising. Meanwhile, as a tenant, I share the same economic pressures as landlords. Money to the legal law, my grocery prices have gone higher, health insurance premiums, and descriptions were established. Transportation and basic goods are more expensive. Many working-class tenants find me receiving low or low wage growth. I understand that landlords face operating costs, but tenants are not immune to that same economic condition. We are part of the ecosystem too, and for us, the consequences are personal and painful. I respectfully urge the board to honor freeze, rent, or allow minimal increases. Retacking tenants helps preserve Nassau's county communities and honors the Spirit of the Emerging Tenant Protection Act of nineteen seventy-four. Please remember, we are just not tenants. We are the workers, parents, and elders who go to sustain these neighborhoods. We are your neighbors. We are asking for fairness and the right to age in place without fear of displacement. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Michael Schneier.
Good evening. Before I start, I have some moves. Can you spell my last name?
Sure.
It's Michael Schneier, S-C-H-N-I-E-R, and I'm a twenty-five Franklin Low Bar in Long Beach. I've been president of Long Beach Student Association for a number of years now. I've been attending these meetings of Nassau County American Association since the nineteen nineties. On the handout that I gave you, you will look on page three, the one with the double side. Statistics that have been compiled by the most current administration over the last three years, with the most recent year being the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year, okay? It should be noted that, as of two thousand one, there were eleven thousand nine hundred forty ETPA units in Nassau County. If you look at the highlighted number, the first highlighted number I have there, that number has now been reduced to six thousand eight hundred forty-one, or a forty-three percent reduction in the housing stock of rent-stabilized units over a twenty-three-year period. Meanwhile, many of these rent-stabilized units are subject to preferential rents, which are lower than the legally regulated rents. By examining that same page, it should be noted that in New York State, which is a New York state now, there's a total of nine hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred thirty-six registered rent-stabilized units exist statewide. At a god number, two hundred ninety thousand one hundred sixty-two are classified as having preferential rents. That's nearly one out of every three rent-stabilized units in state. While HR does not break down the number of rent-stabilized units by county, they do break down a number of preferen-- um, I'm sorry. While they don't break it down by county, I have been curious about it for a number of years, and actually, if you look at the previous page on the back of the cover, there's a link that I highlighted, which, if you click on it, you will see a spreadsheet of every rent-stabilized apartment in New York City. Kind of randomly listed, but what I did was, I was able to sort the spreadsheet by county first, and then by apartments with preferential rent, which, and that number sixty-eight forty-one, when you do that, actually comes to the right end. The spreadsheet at that point ends at row number sixty-eight forty-one, okay? So, everything's accurate, and what I found was, out of Nassau County, sixty-eight, six thousand eight hundred forty-one rent-stabilized apartments, two thousand six hundred sixteen of them are paying for preferential rents, which is almost thirty-eight percent of the apartments, which means that the rents are so high that the landlords can't even charge the legally regulated rent for almost forty percent of the apartments that are rent-regulated in Nassau County. Now, if you want a copy of my sorted spreadsheet on the last page, I provided you with page one. I would have loved to print it out for you guys, where each tab is a hundred forty pages. So, I have provided my email address, and if you'd like to see the entire spreadsheet that I assembled from the state spreadsheet, you can just send me an email, and I'd be happy to forward you that spreadsheet. All right, questions? Okay, last thing I'll say is, I think, and I will, I would like everybody in my way to hang on to this, this future meeting, because I will be speaking at least one more meeting, and I will be referring to other data on this spreadsheet, on the handout I gave you today. But I don't see, under these conditions, that there's any need for any further rent increases.
Steve Perry.
How is everyone? So, I would just like to touch base on where we're at today. Oh, I'd like to touch base where we are at today. The city of Long Beach budget for twenty-five to twenty-six, well, everybody in Long Beach will incur a two-point-five percent tax increase. The town of Hempstead, which incorporates Rockville Center, the Village of Hempstead, all the villages, in twenty twenty-four, the general tax rate was two hundred twenty-two point six-six-three. In twenty twenty-five, the general tax rate increased to two hundred fifty-four five hundred twenty-two, which is thirty-one point eight-five-nine increase in tax rate per hundred dollars of assessed value. That is a twelve point five-two percent tax increase. The Long Island Herald, in October of twenty twenty-four, published the article about this increase, and said, "A jump of over twelve percent that would far exceed the tax gap of two percent," it was voted in. The town of Hempstead, general tax rate in twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, the school tax rate in twenty twenty-four was five hundred and sixty point zero four-four, and twenty twenty-five, five hundred and eighty-eight point six-seven-six for a hundred dollars of assessed valuation. That is a twenty-eight point six-three-two tax increase, which resulted in a five point one-one percent tax increase. The town of North Hempstead, which is Great Neck, had a general tax of twenty twenty-four, eighty-nine point nine-four-four, and twenty twenty-five, ninety-one point seven-seven-two, which resulted in a one point eight-two-eight of one hundred dollars assessed value, or a tax increase of two point oh-three percent. The school tax in the town of North Hempstead, the tax rate in twenty twenty-four was three hundred and sixteen point three-eight-two, and twenty twenty-five, three hundred forty-one seven-nine-five, which resulted in a twenty-five point four-one-three, one hundred dollar assessed valuation, or an eight point oh-three tax increase. In twenty twenty-five, the village of Hempstead's tax for the period seven-one twenty-five to twenty-six increased two point one-three percent. Some of the school budgets are out, and the tax increase in the village of Long Beach is increasing two point four percent. In the village of Rockville Center, two point six percent. In the village of Great Neck, three point oh-five percent. HUD fair market value for apartments in Nassau County for a studio is eighteen forty-eight, a one-bedroom, twenty-two forty-one, a two-bedroom, twenty-five eighty-six. In my rent-stabilized apartments, the studio is seven hundred eighty-six thousand ten cents. A one-bedroom, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars thirty-one cents. A two-bedroom, eight hundred seventy-five square foot, one and a half, a little balcony, one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Lastly, I want to give everybody this picture. I would forget you. If you've seen those pictures, I guess. This picture that you're getting, if anyone who remembers, if you're my age, is from nineteen seventy-five, when Jimmy Carter, Abe Bean, and Bell Epsom in the South Bronx, in burnt-out buildings and abandoned buildings, and that was the result of a tax program that went astray, and landlords were crushed, and they abandoned their buildings. That, with a one point five percent rent increase last year, with all these tax increases, and we haven't even touched on the insurance increase. That'll be for free, though. This is what it could be, is the result that's gonna be. How in the world can we maintain quality of life that we wanted, with the taxes increasing so much? The banks of New York, for rent-stabilized apartments, their model is expenses are increasing four percent, rents two percent. I'm done. So, they're not writing rent-stabilized loans anymore. And one bank, one bust, because, thank you. Three minutes over?
It's okay. And last but not least, the very honorable Denise Ford.
Good evening. And by the way, congratulations on becoming chairman.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you've been enjoying.
You were there for me, weren't you?
Yes. Don't I know. You're probably wondering why I'm here, because I am not in office anymore. I don't live in an apartment, but over the years, the twenty years that I spent as a legislator and coming, and I remember Lisa Ann Oldman brought me down to the first meeting they had, when I was first in office, and she asked me to get involved and become aware of these apartments and the tenants and the people who live in these communities. And so, every year, I came to meetings, Long Beach, Hempstead, up in the Perry Building, whatever. And all I can say is that I ask you, that when you want to consider any type of increase, think about the people who live in them. They are, like we had Lynn Anderson talk about, how she's been in the apartment for over forty years, and most of the tenants have lived there. This is their life. This is their home, and they are very, very important to our communities, because they do shop locally. And I understand, you know, the landlord, and I do feel bad for the previous gentleman, because his building is basically one-hundred percent rent-stabilized, and he feels the pain, unlike a lot of the other landlords, you know, where most of their buildings probably have a ratio of rent-stabilized to mortgage rate. So, and when you look at, you know, this total incomes-to-expenses ratios, you see that despite everything, despite the rising cost for their insurance, any taxes, any type of utilities, the landlords are basically still resulting in a profit. So, some sort of a profit. And a lot of the tenants, I'm sure that, because as they're paying home to themselves, that they may be retiring, they wouldn't not be, you know, they're not going to be working anymore, and they may have to retire from social security, they may have a pension. So, these places, these apartments that they call home, are very, very important to them, and they want to stay there. So, I ask that you consider all of this. And I do wish, though, that maybe we didn't have to always have one-size-fits-all, you know, when you do about increases, you know, maybe to take, I wish you maybe take into consideration these buildings that have, like, a higher number of rent-stabilized as compared to those that are low rent-stabilized. If you have maybe a sliding scale, then that's something that can be considered, you know, just to give relief to those that are good landlords, and they do keep rent-stabilized apartments alive. I mean, to go from eleven thousand, and that was during my tenure, it was eleven, to go from eleven thousand apartments to six thousand, it really is very, it's very, very sad. And so, I ask you that, it's important to me, and that's why I'm here. This is why I don't need to be here, but I want to tell you something. I feel very invested in these people, and I really care for them, and I do ask that you really take into consideration who they are and what they need to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Is there any other person who might need a hand? Do you have one?
I request to reopen the sign sheet for people who are at a late.
How many people want to speak, raise your hands? All right, come up, say your name, please, in the future. Let's try and be on time, in order.
Yes, sir. I have a book here, I don't try. I lived at sixty-five when you could--
Who is your name?
I lived at sixty-five.
Brian?
I lived at sixty-five when you could--
And speaking of--
Sixty-five, and you could go apart for forty-seven years, and it reached so often that happens in two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen. The super was building, posted notes on my door that harbor holders are coming to my apartment, and all kinds of accusations that, you know, possible illegal activity going on in my apartment. And they tried, it happened in two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen, and they just tried it recently. And I, you know, he doesn't do repairs. They do anything they can to try and get rid of me. The lies are ridiculous. I went to the building department here, and they found five violations. The toilet hadn't been flushing for a year. He kept telling me it's slow water pressure. The oven, he replaced the perfectly good oven with one that was defected. The oven door fell off a couple of weeks after he put it in. The bathroom sink didn't work at all. The kitchen sink leaks all the time. So, the building department finally got these things corrected, and, you know, I'm filing a grievance to the housing authority to get a reduction in rent for all these things, and he refused to fix it. As a matter of fact, he actually woke the sink. He came out, was working fine, and he comes to my apartment one night, says, "I'll have to fix the pipe on the sink." There's nothing wrong with it. A couple of days later, the pipe burst, flooded my apartment, flooded the apartment floor, and another woman who was not woke there, everything went into the stasis car. So, they do all these tactics to get rid of me. It's been there forty-seven years. And it's like, you know, he tells these lies, and it's like, what do I do? You know, I have to go to court, and, you know, I'd like to take legal action against him, but all the attorneys I contact, they only represent landlords, because they know where the money is. So, you know, I'm seventy-three, and I gotta go through this, you know, all the time. He's always, you know, asking me when I'm gonna leave, when I'm gonna die. He's always accusing me of things, you know, like, I build bicycles. He said, "Oh, we just deal that bicycle." He's always insulting me, you know? I gotta live this, right, you know? I'm supposed to be, you know, my later years, I'm supposed to be able to, I'm a nervous wreck all the time. Not someone I can warn, or if I tell something, come to me at the apartment. I invited my neighbor, he said, "All my neighbors are complaining about it." Every neighbor on my floor, every other tenant, nobody had any complaints. But they did the same thing, two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen, said, "The neighbors are complaining about harbor holders coming to my apartment." I had to go to court, and, you know, and then also, they refused to give me a storage unit. It was empty storage units. He refused to give me a storage unit for twenty years now. The best time they tried to evict me is, the judge ruled that they have to provide me with a storage unit. He says, "I'm not gonna give you a storage unit." I said, "Why not?" "I don't want you putting in there what you're gonna put in there." "What do you mean by that?" And now he tells me, "Oh, it has to be on the lease." And it's like, I was just down to the storage room, they had empty storage units. And I had the receipts of a storage unit that I had in Island Park for almost twenty years, where I had to pay over a hundred dollars a month for a storage unit, where I could have had one, sort of like thirty dollars in the building. So, you know, how do I get that money back, you know?
Who is your landlord?
Ashlar. But the super, and you can't get all the land, you know? You call them, you leave messages, they leave emails, they never get back to you, never. I've never spoken to them, ever, in years and years. So, I just wanted to get that open my chest, you know, by being correct.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paige Perkins. I'm in Hempstead. And the reason why I'm here today is to address how important that the rent is not increased in the board as it's been. Due to my old landlord, living with the landlord that I was residing in, I've stayed in the apartment for twelve years. I've never given any problems. I have three children. I'm a single mother with three children. My oldest is special, is special needs. So, it's been, it was very difficult, working over forty-eight hours a week, trying to make ends meet, and dealing with a landlord that's, there's mice, there's mildew, there's, there's bed bugs, mice. It was very difficult for me to sleep at night, because of the fact that there's mice over, I had to get rid of these, the islands, and the landlord was constantly raising rent. I had to repaint my old apartment. I had marks from the bed, from the bedbugs. And this, and it's really atrocious how these young landlords come constantly, year after year, requesting that the rent be increased, because they simply cannot keep things up close, where all they do is lie. They're putting us in harm's way. They're putting our children in harm's way. So, it is very critically important. Yes, we have to pay the rent, but it shouldn't be at the expense of our families, of our communities. Because I had to be evicted, because although I put an order of pause, they didn't listen. So, it allows the least landlord to do whatever they want to do, pocket the money, do whatever, and guess what? Because of the eviction, it puts the eviction on my credit report. So, the next apartment I have to look for, they're looking like, "I got, like, I got evicted from the apartment due to this non-payment," but he got away with it, because he's doing whatever, and that's not right. So, I am here to stand with not just Hempstead, the Hempstead community, but Long Beach as well, to say that it is time to stand with the community, to stand with the tenants, because it is costing, it is stress-level. A lot of, I, it's been, it cost my family a lot, because it came to the point that my family was bouncing around from hotel to hotel, and my son was not able to get the care that he needed. So, it's very stressful at the end of the day. We're asking for balance and the respect, because the same way we go out there and we put in the work to make sure that the rent is paid, it's the same way that we ask that these landlords do what is right by us, and if you're not going about by why, then you shouldn't be a landlord. Let's make that clear. You should not be a landlord. This is costing over and over. So, if you have a heart, please stand with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William, thanks for this.
Speak up, I can't hear.
Good evening. Very nice, gentlemen. My name is William, thanks for this. I'm a senior--
What's your last name, William?
Bailey.
B-A--
B-A-L-E-Y.
Go ahead, William. Go ahead, William.
So I work in Hempstead as a community leader and I'm also director of New York Campaign for Change. I'm here on behalf of the tenants here, support you guys in Long Beach, and I support tenants throughout all of Long Island in New York State. But I'm also here tonight as someone who knows who doesn't like to be on the other side. I myself have been homeless and because I've been homeless, I lived through the fear, I lived through the instability, and I lived through the sense that no one, no one in power was listening to me. And when I tried to have a voice, if you don't have a lawyer, you can't afford a lawyer, the system is against you. But for many families in Hempstead who are barely holding on, year after year, I hear tenants dealing with rising rents, landlords who exploit legal loopholes, the conditions that no one should have to live in. But also, year after year, I also hear on your side of the fence, the narrative that it's maybe one or two landlords. And that's because there's not enough tenants who know about the meetings and don't know when they're coming, you know, scheduled meetings. In the past, we had to come up to, you know, an exhibition at these meetings, be, you know, more, there's more transparency around that. Then you, you know, a few years, you got Hempstead's zero percent increase. I think last year you got it one point five, if I'm not mistaken. And that's great. But as of right now, there are no scheduled meetings in Hempstead. And I think I'm appalled at that and for a community that's right in the center and, you know, who's been vulnerable and left out all the time, I just feel like, you know, that's something that, you know, I would urge you all to please reconsider. Find a location, you know, it's right in Hempstead, where tenants right now, as we speak, are struggling, are being evicted, can't afford rent. And when you all at the end of the night go back to your homes, remember, there are people out there who cannot have that opportunity to afford to go to home. They either going back to a shelter or they're assessed, given a hard time and kicking about or not opening up. So please reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, she's not... I love the twenty-three.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stern Shivers, I reside in Hempstead and I stand with the tenants of Long Beach. I too come from Terrace Avenue, y'all know. And I was facing this, and I actually got evicted. My landlord wouldn't fix anything, I got kitchen where the ceiling fell down, and the apartment was a mess. But I still lost my apartment. I don't think a lot, I understand, of course, the living goes up and owners have to fix their properties and stuff like that, and this is not against those owners. But we have to do something, I don't think that landlords or slumlords who don't fix their properties, who have mice running all over the place, bed bugs and all this other kind of stuff, are entitled to any kind of injustice. You know, I don't even think they should be entitled to continue to keep these pockets. I've been fighting for housing for thirteen years. I shouldn't be homeless now. Y'all should have stood beside me when I was telling you that my bathroom ceiling fell, that I had electrical problems, but what did y'all do? Y'all allowed him to take me to court and lose my apartment. I'm sixty years old, I'm looking to live in a shoebox for a minute. Because even though I lost my apartment, like Peggy said, we go on this blacklist where we can't get another apartment. At sixty years old, what am I gonna do on a fixed income of a thousand and fifty-six dollars? Where am I supposed to live? Am I supposed to take that money and go stay in a shelter? We have to change. You have to look out for the little man. Like I said, it's nothing against the landlords who take care of their properties, but the ones who don't take care of their properties, they don't deserve a rent increase at all. Thank you.
Okay, that will conclude the public speaking portion of the meeting. Is there any other business for the board?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Motion is all made.
Okay. Hempstead has the most rent regulated buildings in Nassau and usually we have the biggest turnout when we're in Hempstead. This year, we don't have a meeting scheduled for Hempstead. I'd like to move to either move the meeting in Lindbrook on June twenty-third to Hempstead, which we now have located that are available, or then we add an additional, an additional venue in Hempstead, which would be the number of meetings that we normally have every year anyway. Perhaps June twenty-sixth?
I don't know if I can make June twenty-sixth. I have to take a look.
I think you look forward as well to...
Well, first, there's a second motion.
I'm second.
Just for a statement.
Yes, now that there's a second.
I'm second motion.
Okay, now on the motion. All right.
Okay, I just, you know, we've been to Hempstead many times and we haven't been to Lindbrook and I understand you are a representative for all of Nassau County. I don't think it's fair to Lindbrook. We've been to Hempstead multiple times, year after year, I've been on this board longer than anyone and we've almost every year been to Hempstead. I can't recall the last time we've been to Lindbrook, so I don't think it lacks, in my opinion, a sense of balance as well.
I'd just like to say that I, I think that Hempstead is one of our most important places to go because it's one of our most deeply affected communities and it also, in terms of racial apartments, I actually very strongly believe we should be there and we, you know, we've had this discussion before in the past and I think out of everywhere, that's an essential place for us to be. Thank you.
I, I don't think Lindbrook or Hempstead or any of the others is less important in terms of the people, so I just want to pass it.
I, I think...
Racial, I'm talking about racial, huh?
Yeah, I, I don't think Lindbrook should be the cause of the meeting at Hempstead's expense. So I would consider your motion to be one, an additionally in Hempstead on the twenty-sixth, I think is it? And that's just before we vote, we'll check the calendars.
Was there another date?
I don't have it available tonight.
I want to join the debate.
June twenty-fourth, Tuesday is available, June twenty-sixth on the Thursday, which is what I suggested, is available.
I can't answer that now because I don't have it available in my, my schedule.
I know I won't be available the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fourth?
I don't know.
Twenty-fourth?
I think it's twenty-fourth. I think it is twenty-fourth.
We're gonna do the twenty-fourth. Mike?
I think we should have two separate votes. One on, should we move to Hempstead? Second one should be if we should have another meeting. Let's have two separate committees.
Okay. So let's call a question for the first one. All in favor of changing the location to Lindbrook meeting Hempstead?
Moving. Moving Lindbrook to Hempstead.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry, Rob.
Moving Lindbrook to Hempstead.
Changing the venue.
Changing the venue.
Change your venue.
In favor, yes.
Okay, motion January four to one?
It's gotta be five.
That is right.
That's, that's your idea.
Are you voting yes?
Five to one. Usually I just break ties with it. Okay, so we will move the Lindbrook meeting, which is currently scheduled for?
Six twenty-three.
Six twenty-three to Hempstead. Is there any other business?
James, can you go ahead a couple of days because I have no idea, I'm the only landlord rep.
Don't expect to have another meeting in Lindbrook, these people are nice to make the village hall available. I will say for the record that I contacted the Village of Hempstead six times and I also spoke with Rose at the Nathan Pavilion, the dates that you gave me, they were not accommodating of it. So the Village of Hempstead, the Village Town Hall at James Gardner Way does not seem interested in hosting us. I'm not gonna go to the police station, I'm not gonna go to the library, they have a village hall, they don't seem...
This is the Nathan Pavilion, correct?
Right, this would be at the Nathan Pavilion, but again, the initial meeting we had and the dates you gave me and Jeanette's availability in particular, that week did not, we, we could not get the Pavilion, so...
So, but now that the circumstances changed, they're willing to provide it for the twenty-third or twenty-second?
Well, someone, a tenant, not the same date, the twenty-third, they're not available, but a tenant advocate reached out to the Pavilion and they're available. What are the dates, Rob, on that email that you sent me?
I have June ninth, June twelve, June twenty-fourth, and June twenty-sixth.
Right, so we'd have to make it the, I never asked her for the twenty-fourth or the twenty-sixth because those were not the things we agreed upon.
Right. Well, wait, Rob, is the Pavilion available on the twenty-third?
No.
I'm not sure about that.
If it's not, then we can't change Lindbrook.
Yeah, change that unless we have a place to land, right.
Right, so let's vacate that motion. And we will move, the motion would be to have an additional meeting in Hempstead on the twenty-fourth. All in favor? All right, motion passes five to one. The William meeting in Hempstead on June twenty-fourth.
I'll send out a supplemental...
No, thank you. Our next meeting will be in the free court on June twelve. Any other business?
It's Tuesday, twelve.
All right, well, give me the motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second. All in favor? Three.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.